The band's back, you can shoot a match if you do.
Long as it's not a spread.
Good morning, today's birthday, November 24th, 2020. We are here for a work session and as always, we'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
Tim, can you please take the lead?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Tim. We have several announcements today. First, in response to the increase in COVID positive cases in Riverhead, yesterday, the governor designated parts of Riverhead in the 11901 SIP code as a yellow zone. While this is indeed disappointing, it is important to note that this is the least restricted designation in New York State Cluster Action Initiative. Specific gardens can be found at www dot forward dot NY dot gov. I urge all residents to please remain vigilant and adhere strictly to the three Ws, which are wash your hands, wear your mask, watch your distance. Please follow all social distancing rules and consider getting tested at one of the five locations throughout Riverhead. The details can be found on our town website. Next, residents are encouraged to go online to the town website and complete the town's law enforcement advisory panel survey. As of this morning, we have received 511 responses, and we are hoping that the public engages in this effort. The survey will be available through December 20, 2020. Last, on behalf of myself and the entire town board, I wish to extend a warm, happy Thanksgiving to all our residents. This holiday is certainly bringing with it a unique set of challenges, but I remain hopeful and confident that the future of Riverhead is bright. And I just want to add one thing that came in yesterday afternoon concerning Solar Two. It's at the state level for review, and I know Catherine Kent wanted to ensure that the public was aware of this hearing. It's scheduled for Monday. I'll let you chime in. Please note that as a public forum, we are not going to discuss this in detail because there is a public hearing by another, by the state entity, and we don't want a conflict. Our sole purpose at this moment is to make the public aware that this hearing is scheduled. Catherine, did you want to add?
Sure, that's great, thank you. I just wanted to mention that there is a public hearing, the information, and maybe Diane would like to add to some of the information, but if I miss something. We received notice, there was notice from the state, that there is a public hearing in regard to Riverhead Solar Two, and the hearing is on Monday, December first, excuse me, Tuesday, December first, at one o'clock, and then again at six o'clock. And I'd like it if Diane could put up the information so that people can get the web number and join, so that they can weigh in. And also, I just want to mention that the town did receive $36,000 for us to participate in this, in this application, so I'm glad to announce. Diane, did you want to weigh in anything else and let us know if you're going to put that information up so that the public can see it?
Catherine, most of the information, we, you know, go to the supervisor's office, so we'll make sure that it goes up on the website. I think it should go up on two. We'll put it up as its own individual, and we'll also put it up in the building department to make sure.
That would be great. Yeah, I did print out, because there are web numbers, the password and such, that people would need to get in and watch it.
Yeah, perfect. So if you can give that to our office, then we'll definitely put it up, okay? Because that's usually the protocol. Diane, so thank you, Diane, for if you were going to add, but I think we got it covered. And Bob, if, I don't know if you just want to add about the notification, if you don't.
Well, I'll fill in just a couple of things, because as pointed out by the councilperson, there is a hearing that's being conducted by the state's siting board, which is reviewing the application of Riverhead Solar Two. That's the 36-megawatt facility that's proposed under the Article 10 process at the state. Couple of points that probably bear mention. In order to access it, there's a case number that's assigned to this particular application, and I'm going to repeat it a couple of times just to make sure that the people who are watching have a chance to write it down if they don't have access through the web. And that's case 17 hyphen F hyphen 0655. So again, just to repeat, it's 17 hyphen F hyphen 0655, and that's the case number. There is also a web site for this application. As pointed out by the councilperson, there's going to be hearings, which are the public statement hearings process. This application is pending before the Department of Public Service, and it's being reviewed by the state agency. The website is www dot DPS, that's Delta, boy, Peter, Sierra, dot NY, dot gov. This application has been pending since about 2017, when the PIP was filed. Then, the following stage was the PSS, and this is the actual application process, and it allows for the public to be heard. As referenced by councilperson, the town did apply for intervener funds. At this stage, the intervener funds are in the amount of $36,000, as pointed out.
Okay, and that's good. Again, the reason we just made this an announcement, we don't want to interfere with a state public hearing. We don't know what the determination is going to be for it, against it. We do not unfortunately have approved department for this, this project. It's at a state level due to the size of it, and we'll see what happens on Monday, and thank you, Bob.
Yeah, Diane Wilhelm, just remind me that if anybody has any request to get further detail, they can contact her office and speak with Diane or any of her deputy clerks. It's 631-727-3200, extension 260 for Diane.
And that's perfect. And again, it'll be on as a, as a link on our first page, and then we'll put it up on the building website after, we're fully briefed this afternoon.
Well, Diane did get an email. She, Diane, I'm glad you're working with Diane on it, but Diane, just a reminder, she is an elected official, and she did put it up there. It's down again, but I'm glad to hear that it's going back up.
Okay.
That is within her purview, a part of her job, but she does a fabulous job.
Yes. Thank you, Diane, and you do do a fabulous job. However, anything that goes on the town website has to be cleared through the supervisor's office, and it wasn't yesterday. We need to tighten this up and make sure we do it right. Thank you. And moving forward, we only have one item today for open discussion, and it's a presentation that we have here by the Girl Scout Troop 595. The girls worked hard on a project regarding the real purposing of existing buildings throughout Riverhead, and I'm looking forward to this presentation. I'll turn it over to Councilwoman Catherine Kent to introduce the group. Catherine?
Great, thank you so much. Did you bring them in?
He's doing that now.
Okay.
It'll be just a slide alone.
All right. Yeah, I'd kind of like to wait till the girls get in, just so they can fully participate. This is really, I'm very excited to have these, this group come in today. This is a nice crossover between my two professions. Which happens to Tim sometimes, too, right?
Yes, sometimes more than I like.
So if their names, they're, they're already in the group, they're, they can hear?
Looks like most of my girls are here.
All right, so I want to introduce, this is Troop 595, and I'm going to introduce the girls that are here, and then we'll show the video that they made, and then after that, I just have, I just have a couple of questions of the girls. That's my teacher background. So today, we have with us Grace Felmonti, and Grace is a student at St. John's Paul, St. John Paul. There's Isabel Coriano, who is a student at Shoreham Waiting River, and then we have Alyssa Dispenzari, who is, and Amina Fedeli, Summer Relander. Rose Ruland, Allison Ru Prek, I hope, you guys can correct me if I mess up your names, and Isabel Stein. They are all students at Pulaski Street School. These girls did a project for their bronze award. They originally started out, I think, they wanted to cover two topics in Riverhead. They wanted to cover the concern about vacant buildings, and they also wanted to talk about that there's a lack of activities for kids in the wintertime. So what they originally wanted to do was have a roller skating event in one of our vacant buildings, but we had a concern about safety of putting kids in one of the vacant buildings, and then they moved to wanting to have their event outside of Stotski Park. And I know Liz Keller was a big help in all of that, but then COVID hit, so they ended up doing this video, which I think is really fabulous. I also want to mention one other person who's here, and that is Kristen Relander, and of all of the girls up here, one person is my, was my student in first grade, and that's Kristen. So I knew she had leadership qualities in first grade, and I see that she's still carrying forward with that. Did you want to add anything before we started the video?
Was that for me, Ms. Kent?
Yes, yes.
No, I don't need to, um, really add too much. Most of the girls are here. Rose was having a little trouble, so she's with me on my phone watching, and Grace had to be at school today, so, but we've got mostly everybody.
All right, so we'll go ahead and roll the video, then?
Thank you, sure.
We turn it up? Larry, can we make it louder? There we go. Great. Thank you.
Seems to be frozen on my screen. Is that frozen for everyone else?
No.
My friends and I, in Troop 595, are very concerned about the amount of vacant buildings.
It's frozen for me.
It keeps on.
New buildings need to be built. There are plenty of vacant buildings to be used. For our bronze award, we wanted to make people aware of this problem, so we were going to hold a roller skating event here in the armory, but unfortunately, there was more than 100. Next, we were going to hold the event here at St. John's Park, but unfortunately, 595 then happened. Riverhead Town had some of the skating equipment that we were going to need, but we were going to need more, so we were planning on bringing a cram. Instead of doing a physical event, we've decided to make a video for you, and now the rest of my trio will explain why we think we should reuse the vacant buildings in our town. We only have one earth, and I think we need to do a better job of taking care of it. Trees are very important to our earth, and the more we take down our trees to build new strip malls and new buildings and communities, the more we are hurting our environment. Trees have a very important job. Some grow trees, while others have animals to call their home. But one of their most important jobs is to give out, to give us oxygen. They give out oxygen for us to breathe and taking carbon dioxide, which we breathe out, kind of like the opposite of us. But without trees, it's getting harder to breathe every day. Cutting trees is throwing our, our delicate earth's balance off, forcing animals to move from one place to another, new natural habitats, and new predators. They are all dying because they're fighting over food, shelter, and water. We already have enough empty buildings across Riverhead. We don't need any, we don't need to build any more new buildings, when we have plenty. Let's do our part to save our environment, wildlife, and ourselves.
We want to do this as our bronze award is because we care about our local wildlife. There's a bunch of endangered species like piping plover and tiger salamanders, and the new kids on the block, foxes, turkeys, and bald eagle. And let's not forget the animals we see every day, the deer, bunnies, ospreys, and turtles. One of the reasons we see them every day is because we're destroying their homes for new buildings that we don't need. I am concerned that if we don't change what we're doing, we might never see our local wildlife we love.
The reason why we want to do this as our bronze award is because we want to address that people are wasting too much money. They are wasting too much money by cutting down trees by building new buildings. Also, the money that people are wasting comes from other stuff that is important for our community.
There's nothing to do in the winter in Riverhead for kids in Riverhead. The problem is that the activities are far away, like Skyzone in Mount Sinai, or roller skating in Greenport. It would be great to make this old Walmart to movie theater or laser tag, maybe even a go-kart track. This is why we should have more indoor activities for the winter in Riverhead.
There are a lot of empty buildings in Riverhead, but a lot of new buildings being built. Some places have been reused, like this place is behind me. It's turning into the Long Island Science Center. But the whole Walmart is a big building that can be reused for roller skating, right? Also, the old Toys R Us is another big building that can be used for anything kids or adults. If we reuse more buildings, there will be a lot of more open space in Riverhead.
People keep clearing the land to construct new buildings when we have perfectly good vacant buildings that can't be used. They're not taking into consideration the environment and not reusing or repurposing existing structures. Many people don't realize that money may be saved when repurposing buildings as opposed to building entirely new structures.
I think we should repurpose the old buildings instead of building new ones. Maybe the town can give businesses an incentive to do this instead of building new ones.
If we can convince the town to reuse vacant buildings, then there will be more things for kids to do.
Keep the kids and adults of Riverhead entertained.
We will have more pride in our town.
Our town will be more visually appealing.
There'll be more open spaces for our community.
We will save natural habitats.
We will have better air quality.
People will want to visit Riverhead.
That must have been a fun project.
Yeah, there's a little more. This is a picture of them. It's a couple of pictures of them at the public forum, I think.
Oh, okay. Are they in the same class?
No. This is, they worked with Brian Christiano, who's a grad, who is from Riverhead, and helped them with persuasive discussions. I didn't want you to miss that part.
That's pre-COVID.
There were some pictures there. I don't know what happened to them, but there were some pictures of them. They came and participated in the public forum that we had at the senior center for the downtown, for the pattern book. So I just wanted to ask a couple of questions. If you, can all the girls hear me? I'm wondering if you, okay, great. We could probably turn it down a little now, Larry. I wanted to check with the girls and see if any of you are willing to chime in on what you learned from this project.
What do you mean?
What did you, when the project was all done, you, it, you have new knowledge and you know about new things. What do you know now that you didn't know before? What did you learn from doing this?
Well, I realized how many more buildings are empty than I thought, like there were, like there are a lot more than I thought there were.
Okay, and just wondering if any of you are thinking perhaps you might like to do government work at some point? No?
Smart, smart girls.
You girls can turn off your mute button and talk.
Right.
No, thank you.
All right.
What about you, Alyssa?
I do want to.
Isabel, are you guys going to do politics, government work when you get older?
Eh, probably not.
My cousin's becoming more older.
Oh, that's very cool. Rose, what do you want to say?
My, my poppy, he was on the town, South Old Town Board, and I want to, I want to be president of the world.
There you go.
Okay, well, we like people with high aspirations. So before we close, I just want to mention that we also, the town is also going to be working with the girls and with their leader on a rain garden that's going to be put at Pulaski Street School. So before we close, Kristen, did you want to add anything?
No, not really, other than I'm just super proud of these girls. They worked really hard. This is not exactly how they wanted their project to go from the beginning, but they went with it, and they did an awesome job, and they make me proud every day.
And a couple of the buildings that you brought up, actually, Greg, we, a couple of those buildings actually have projects coming into them, and they are going to be reused. Greg, can you just tell them before they go? Which ones? Did you guys want to add anything?
No.
Rose, did you have a question?
I was going to say about politics thingy, and then now, like, you say you're proud. Well, my poppy's really proud of me, and because he's sick right now with the cancer, I would probably just be being happy.
I'm sure he's very proud of you right now, Rose.
So we're just going to tell you, a couple of those buildings, girls, are going to be reused, and we're just going to let you know which ones.
I believe we do have an application in right now to, for Lidl supermarket to come into the old Toys R Us shopping center, the old building. That's the only one that I'm aware of right now.
I thought there was something over by the Applebee's, that building. No? Okay. All right, well, thank you guys so much, and I hope you have a good day and a happy Thanksgiving.
Do you have any idea, do you have any idea of what those buildings are going to be reused into?
The building that he mentioned, the old Toys R Us, is going to be a supermarket.
Ooh.
All right.
Girls are on the, go ahead.
And there's, there's actually some talk on two other buildings that right now, there is talk, we're not going to reveal. Yeah, it's very early stages, but there are promising things happening. And thank you, and thank the scout leader. This is great to see that you were, under these circumstances, you were able to pull this. As challenging as it was, I know that you walk away with, you won, you got your message across. And thank you, and Tim, did you want to hear anything?
Yeah, I just want, girls, I really appreciate the project. It was an excellent job, and it was an excellent topic, because the topic you chose is very important, and instead of knocking down trees and clearing land, we should work hard, and we do. We do work with real estate agents, and we try to get them to look at our properties that are available, and when I say ours, not the town of Riverheads, but vacant properties that are in the town. And in terms of getting something more kid-acclimated out here, we're always looking for that, too, and we have some things in the works, maybe down the road, that you might be very excited about. Thank you very much.
Thank you, guys. Have a good day and happy Thanksgiving.
Yes.
You too.
Have a good Thanksgiving.
Happy Thanksgiving.
Thank you, everyone. This concludes our discussion items.
Happy Thanksgiving.
Thank, happy Thanksgiving. Enjoy.
Could I just say one thing? I just want to wish people a happy Thanksgiving. I just wanted to tell everybody in our community that I wish you a happy Thanksgiving. I know that this is a hard time for so many. I think that, you know, there are so many who are struggling right now to keep their businesses afloat and, you know, having to say goodbye to loved ones. Kids are not in school. People are having trouble putting food on the table, and these are really hard times. But I hope that we can look to our blessings that we do have, and I also hope that people in the community will reach out to each other and help one another. Riverhead has always been a community that stepped up when others were having a hard time, and I hope that if nothing else, you know, reach out to a neighbor who's alone, or, you know, just saying hi to someone in a store, or helping out with people who are struggling to put food on their table. I hope that we can all come together as we always have, and I wish you all a very happy Thanksgiving.
Very well said, Catherine. I completely agree, and ditto to that. Happy Thanksgiving, everybody.
Yes, and thank you, Catherine. Well said. All right, this concludes the discussion items, and Devin, can you please read the resolutions for today?
Sure. Is the council ready? Do we need to?
Yes, we're ready.
Okay. Resolution number one establishes time of regular meetings of the town board.
And I'm excited that we've added, we're adding evening hours now, correct?
Yes, and I just might, I need to add that we are, as of, until we are under COVID, and most of the town board has agreed, and Tim, that the two o'clock meetings, instead of having people in the building with exposure from seven o'clock to maybe 10 o'clock, those are very long hours, including myself, who would be here, and other members, and so as a result, we are, until COVID, until we are on the state of emergency, the meetings, the six o'clock meetings will continue to be scheduled for two o'clock. Once we are out of COVID, we will be resuming that. I have made the statement on many occasions, and unfortunately, town hall can't accommodate it, and we also have to note that the town board has chosen to be here present for their meetings, and if we conducted our meetings remotely, we can accommodate that, just as other towns. They do have their meetings at six o'clock, but they're away. They're not even in the state, some of them. They're at home, they're in vacation homes, or they're in their homes, and we are holding in-house meetings, and as long as they are in-house meetings, they're going to be scheduled to apply. So thank you. On that end, Devin, and you can continue.
I thought, I mean, maybe I misunderstood. I, the way I read it, I thought there were some meetings at six, so what you're saying is the resolution says there's meetings at six, but because of COVID, they're actually all at two.
Yes, that's correct, Catherine.
I think we, I mean, I still think we should have some meetings at six on occasion, just because it's very, they are on Zoom, and it's very hard for people to participate.
So just to dovetail on that, Councilwoman, the, the schedule that's attached to the resolution is, is the schedule that would be in place where there are no COVID happening. We were not under state of emergency.
Correct.
But while we remain under state of emergency, per the supervisor's comments of just now, the, the schedule will be adjusted as, as is designated by the state of emergency, right?
You know, there's also a cost factor to it.
Which, of course, can change, but.
There's, people could possibly, there's a cost factor involved with going to the six o'clock meetings, because the way that we're doing them now, we're doing them with the use of IT and different people to do it on Zoom. We would have, possibly have to pay them overtime to do it at six o'clock in the evening, so there's a cost factor involved also.
Yeah, and I understand all of that. I just think it would be nice if every once in a while, we could have one at six o'clock, because it's just so hard. There are a lot of people in town that want to participate, and it's just too hard for them to come at two o'clock. All right, thank you.
And thank you, Devin, for declaring. And thank you, Devin, for the clarification.
Okay, resolution number two authorizes the supervisor to issue a letter to the Suffolk County Department of Health Services allowing the use of Pine Barrens credits that originated from property located in Riverhead, Lilium Investor Corp. Number three accepts the resignation of a part-time bay constable. Number four, Riverhead Sewer District budget transfer. Number five, Bidma budget reallocation, Bidma Budget Fund reallocation. Number six, Water District Plant 10 Storage Tank Public Interest Order. Number seven, Water District Plant 10 Storage Tank Bond Resolution. Number eight, awards bid for general hardware items. Number nine, appoints a temporary office assistant to the tax receivers office. Number 10 approves extension of performance security posted by Campo Brothers in connection with the subdivision entitled Birchwood at Wading River, Section Three, Road and Drainage Improvements. Number 11 authorizes the substitution in
Okay, go ahead, sorry.
Number 11 authorizes the substitution and release of security posted in connection with the Realty subdivision entitled Bating Hollow Club. Number 12 appoints a part-time Spanish-speaking clerk to the office of the town clerk. Number 13, before I read that, supervisor, do you want to make a few comments?
Yes, I do. Concerning this resolution, I thought it was important that we address a certain particulars. This is, has to do with Nextera, the community benefit that will be provided to us if this project goes forward. In the past, whenever we had community benefits, they were categorized into certain, four distinct areas, and there was never really any mention of specific allocation. And after consulting with most members of the town board, we agreed to designate specific funds to members of our community, to give the funds back to the community. So we have here, number one, we have the community health and welfare, which will consist of $350,000 for the creation and, or the improvement of parks, beaches, recreational facilities, senior and adult programs, and not-for-profit outreach programs. And I know Catherine Kent, you would be happy to hear that in that regard. And she was actually, wanted to ensure that that, that area was covered. And number two, the improvement of the environment. We are, we hope to allocate $250,000 for the protection, preservation, and enhancement and maintenance of the functional integrity of the iconic river, Long Island Sound, and the Pine Barrens ecosystem. And number three, protection of agriculture and open space. Our plan is to allocate $250,000 for the preservation of farmland, open space, undeveloped beachlands, shorelines, establishment, or improvement of our natural preserves, and the promotion of farmers market and by local campaigns. And number three, we designated, we are hoping to designate the $250,000 to the protection of agriculture and open space for the preservation of farmland, open space, under, undeveloped beachlands or shorelines, establishment or improvement of natural, nature preserves, promotion of farmers, oh, not back to three, yeah, farmers market and by local campaign. I have repeated that, I'm sorry. Number four, protection and enhancement, and this is a very critical component, is the protection, promotion and enhancement of police, fire, and emergency medical response. Our plan is to donate a total of, to allocate a total of $350,000 for training related to police, fire, and ambulance emergency response. And then that would include training our fire department concerning toxic fuels and chemical hazards, and also to train them when they may have to respond to solar fires or any hazardous event. The, the police will receive, will be allocated $100,000 for emergency response equipment. The fire department, $100,000 to fire districts. So we have four fire districts, right? So $25,000 for each fire district for a training, and $70,000 in paramedic training. Just recently, we just, we came aware, myself and Tim, that the state is no longer covering the paramedic training, which means that paramedics, they have medicine, it's out in the field. So for instance, somebody's having, you know, a cardiovascular event, they can go in and they can administer medication, and that's critical that we maintain, you know, our medicine out there and the paramedics and the training. And I believe the cost, the $12,000, the state. So that's been eliminated, but we are going to allocate $70,000 for that paramedic training. The ambulance will be $100,000, and $50,000 for the purchase of a rescue vehicle. Recently, I became aware that they do have a very tiny vehicle, and you can't put anybody in the back, and if you do, the vehicle goes on two wheels. And they were trying to reach an individual in some wooded parkland, and they weren't able, in a timely fashion, to reach the individual. So we are gonna donate $50,000 for a rescue vehicle. And again, the each fire district will get $25,000 for training. The iconic Bay Medical Ambulance and the Flanders North Hampton Volunteer, will receive, will be allocated $10,000 for ambulance training. Number five, the advancement of education. $150,000 will be allocated to the Riverhead School District and requires that the expenditure funds achieve or be in furtherance of one or more of the following goals. It's to coordinate efforts with the school, the library, cable internet, possible cable internet providers for those who don't have the financial means to acquire Wi-Fi and possibly allocate study locations for students. And it also includes career-building partnerships and internships. And number six, advance of employment initiative. $150,000 will be allocated for job promotion, enhancement, and development along with job training. And these are all community efforts and all going back. We receive the community benefit, and it's all going back to very segments of our community. Would you want to add to that, Tim?
No, as, the, as far as money going to the police department, the fire departments, and the ambulances, it's money we couldn't give them, you know, had, had this not come through, and it's much needed. The EMT training is, is almost gone by the wayside, because with the, being able to administer medications, they want a paramedic level, and the training for that, like you said, is like $12,000, $13,000 a person. And, you know, town, the ambulance, they don't have money to pay for all these people to get trained, so we have paramedics on duty 24/7. So this is gonna help them tremendously.
And you know what, I, I don't like to talk about my personal life, but in here I can. Last year in November, I had pneumonia, which I often have due to 9/11. It's a common occurrence, and the medication that I've been taking since 2001, I was given the medication, and the first dose, after 15 minutes, I almost became unconscious. I had a terrible reaction, and I was in very, very critical state. And the Riverhead ambulance paramedic showed up, and I'm here today.
They're a great group of people, and we're, quite honestly, we're blessed to have them volunteering their time, many of them, and we certainly appreciate what they do.
Yes. And I want to thank the board for agreeing to be so specific in concerning these efforts, because I, I think that the community needs to know that in any way that we can, we will help them. And to reiterate what Tim said, this is money that we don't have, especially under COVID. But if we do get it, it's going right back to the community.
So I had a couple of other questions about this resolution.
Should I read it first, or you want to hear the questions first, supervisor? What do you prefer?
No, you can read it, and then I'll ask my questions.
Okay, so number 13, amend secret negative declaration contained within town board resolution number 2020-108 and grant special permit with conditions for Long Island Solar Generations LLC, Nextera, to establish a 22.9 megawatt commercial solar energy production facility on 149 Edwards Avenue and 2714 River Road, Calverton, New York, Suffolk County Tax Map number 600-137-1-2.1, and 600-136-1-2.
Go ahead. So this is not, Greg, this is not just the community benefit. This is amending other parts of this resolution, correct?
So what this resolution does is because, based on the public hearing and the comments that were made regarding the recreation trail, there is a secret amendment. Basically, we just did a quick analysis of it. The consideration for the establishment of this easement of a recreation trail would not result in any additional land clearing, would not result in any necessary removal of any trees. So we just amended the original negative declaration to include the analysis that we did of the consideration of this rec trail. That's the, that's the only thing that was amended for any prior resolution, and it's just giving us a level of review on the consideration of that recreation trail.
Okay, because I thought, maybe it was already in there. I thought the section about 20 years, possibly 30, but going back to look at it again about the decommissioning, I thought that was changed.
No, so the resolution, I did include here, based on our previous work session last week, it was a majority of the board determined that they were okay with granting it for the 30 years. So the resolution does contain language.
Well, what's concerning me is that it's, the language is very specific that we're giving them 30 years, we can look at it again in 20, but only for one specific reason.
Correct.
Only for the decommissioning.
Correct.
Whereas for me, I mean, I only wanted to give the 20 years, but I thought that, you know, when they said we're gonna look at it again in 20 years, I feel like there could be other things that come up besides the decommissioning. So why do we have to be specific to that decommissioning point?
Okay, so based on the last week's work session, it was a majority determination by the board. I was directed to prepare a resolution which granted that 30-year special permit, which is the initial 20, inclusive of two five-year extensions. And it was, again, agreed upon, agreed upon by a majority of the board that we would leave it open for the reassessment of the decommissioning bond in 20 years.
Is that what you want?
That's what I understand, yes.
Exactly.
All right, I mean, for me, I think, I, I really don't see why we need to give them 30 years. I think the 20 is sufficient at that point. I think we need to look at the project overall and any other issues that could possibly come up with the project, and at that point, determine whether we want to give them longer time. And was there anything else that was put in here that came out of our work session?
I mean, this resolution has not changed since it was input into MiniTrak on Friday afternoon. So the resolution that was prepared in there is the same one that is before you right now. There's been no additional changes unless, and, you know, board members would like, you know, a majority of the board would like the resolution amended. It is as it was input on Friday afternoon.
No, we stay standard with the resolution.
And for me, I'll reiterate that I know there was a concern about solar and, you know, even a discussion of a moratorium. So that's why I'm surprised that we're actually giving 30 years.
Any additional questions?
No.
All right, thank you.
That's all for now, thank you.
Okay, resolution number 14 authorizes the removal of fixed assets. And number 15 appoints the law firm of David Spellman Barrett, LLP, as special counsel in the legal action against the town of Riverhead commenced by Melissa Breitenbach, ALCO. And that's it.
That's it. Okay, thank you, Devin. Anyone, you want to add anything to?
No. Happy Thanksgiving, everybody. Enjoy, be safe.
Catherine, you good?
Nope, I already said happy Thanksgiving.
All right, again, we wish everyone a happy and healthy Thanksgiving. Due to COVID, I never imagined that these words would mean have such profound meaning. But again, have a happy and a healthy Thanksgiving. In a moment, I'll ask you to go into executive session to discuss the following item. Attorney-client discussion surrounding a possible savings claim with our town attorney. Can I please have a first and a second to go into executive session, uh, into executive session? So moved?
Sure.
Good, all in favor?
All right.
All opposed? So moved. Be safe, everyone. Thank you.